Good morning. Today is Monday, May 18th. We're going to move into our briefings. Go around the room first for introductions.
Kevin Chu.
Alex Paisley.
Kel Rowan.
Dawn Twitty.
Kate Wyndham.
Loretta Swanson.
Tager Callen.
Randy Muth.
And Sharon Trask.
Okay, Loretta.
All right. Morning, commissioners. We have some personnel requests this morning. And per your memo, we are following up and making sure that we have authorization or not to proceed with some hiring that we have underway. And the first is a request to fill our seasonal hire, our seasonal flagging positions. And this is something that we traditionally do every year. And it's a part-time position. And many of our flaggers come back on a routine basis. And we are requesting to go ahead and fill those. And the question may be, well, what if we don't fill these positions? How are we going to deal with our needs for flagging? And we could do that, but it would mean reassigning our road operations personnel, whether it be our teamsters or operators, to provide that flagging. Or we could pull in from, I didn't lay this out in the briefing, but on occasion we pull from our engineering personnel as well, whether it's our surveyors or some of our technicians or E1s. So that's also an option. What that does, though, is that pulls them away from their normal duties and typically a higher cost as well in terms of an hourly compensation. So that is an option. And this, we found, is the most efficient and cost-effective way of filling out vacancies. So our request is to fill eight half-time positions, basically, for the summer months to provide flagging and occasional labor services.
How was our schedule affected because of the COVID thing and we had somebody who dropped for a while? I don't know if we're talking back, but...
Yeah, so we...
Are we behind the eight ball on some things?
We are behind the eight ball on some things. And we're playing catch-up on our typical shouldering work, our mowing, our spraying. We're underway on that. But as you delay for a month and a half or two months, that just puts a crunch on everything else. And we've got a construction schedule this year. We've got two culverts that our county forces are performing work on. And it just kind of snowballs. It either compresses our work or just pushes off or delays some of the other activities that would normally happen.
I would say if you didn't have those seasonal or flaggers, would it affect what we can get done at our window?
Correct, yes. It makes it, it doubles down on that.
Do you quite a few of our projects off of repairs?
We do, absolutely, yes. We've got, for example, we have two FEMA slide repairs that were underway during the last disaster. So we've got those to complete. We also have some work in terms of digging out bad spots in the road, repairing and paving those.
Those FEMA works work on a reimbursement?
They are, yes.
So if we have that staff that doing that repairs, will it reimburse with that stuff?
That is correct. One project, we're likely to need flaggers on, the other not so much, because it would be off the, it's low traffic volume and primarily off right-of-way.
Can you split the baby?
We could split the baby. It'll make it challenging for our engineering side of things. Our survey, our surveying engineers are pretty booked as well, so. And they'll be doubling down on inspection. They're getting ready to enter the inspection time of the season, so where they're not in the office doing design work, they're actually doing field work. And survey support is necessary at that time also. We need to be out there setting control for our projects.
So it would just delay any project?
It would not necessarily delay projects. It would delay our necessary maintenance work. Yeah, because we're, we would accomplish this, work on, work through to provide flagging and labor services.
Have you evaluated the maintenance work for, you know, we have an annual kind of maintenance regimen that we go through?
Yes.
Have you evaluated that, that work and prioritized? If we didn't, if we went with, you know, half, half the flaggers we normally do, or none of the flaggers that we normally do, you know, what work would be the priority among the maintenance and what can be deferred?
Yes, there are things that could be deferred with less impact or safety implications. And that would primarily be shoulder work, if you will. Our, we want to make sure that our vegetation management is taken care of. We need to maintain good site distance. That's important. That's a...
Very important.
Absolutely.
Director, you already...
Yes.
And I, you know, I understand how tough it is and stuff. You know, we're looking at this, this global picture on this.
Absolutely.
Could you pull it off and not lose anything if we did .75 of your request?
That would be much easier, yes. I would feel very comfortable with that.
You'd be able to take care of...
I shouldn't say very, but far more comfortable.
But you can be able to take care of all that site distance, see?
Yes.
Okay, we wouldn't, because I don't want to lose that, that's important.
I agree.
So I would be, I'd be comfortable with that if we continue to hold off on the finance manager position for a little while. Where I think, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the lag time in our revenue reporting. And so the data that we just reviewed last week was from two months ago.
Right.
So, you know, we've agreed to do additional pay for the two employees that have been doing, you know, have been filling in on the, on the finance manager position, which is, I think, in effect at least through the end of this month, if not into June. You know, so my, I think my request would be to hold off on filling that finance manager position until we have a better idea of where your gas tax revenue is going to come in and some other things. I'm not saying that we can't fill it this summer, but if we're going to move forward with the full assortment of all the other positions and we're asking other offices, you know, be mindful of their open positions, I think, you know, I think this is, we have to kind of pick and choose where we can, you know, sort of share that burden as well.
I'm supportive of the, the question I have is, do you already have somebody picked out?
For?
That position?
The finance manager position?
Yeah.
No, so let me be clear where we are on the process on that. We advertised, we reviewed the applicants and decided to reopen and continue the advertisement that recently closed, so we haven't interviewed anyone.
Are you comfortable with two months? Are we looking at it in two months?
Yeah, I mean, so I'm interested, we know we're going to have a state revenue forecast in June.
Yep.
And I think that's going to be a real big indicator on gas tax statewide and what that would mean for us at the county level. So I mean, I would say that, you know, at least revisit it at the end of June.
I'll come.
Depending on, on how that goes. I mean, if we've sort of established of how it's working currently.
Yep.
And it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. I get that. You know, but waiting another five weeks might give us a clearer picture, you know, of where we are and, and how we might be able to address it.
Were you, are, is a real thing, a real word that we have to consider. Are you comfortable with that? Waiting till...
I'm thinking about the relative importance of the finance manager position, the fact that we are approaching budget season and all that needs to happen. We have all kinds of rate setting that needs to happen. And in terms of other positions within the department that are currently vacant, if we needed to do some horse trading, I would feel a lot more comfortable in keeping the finance position and not fill some of the other.
Yeah, you had, you had some of these...
So then, let's, so then let's have that conversation. Because I mean, the way it's presented is there's two positions that you want to fill, or eight seasonal and one...
Correct.
Full-time regular, so...
Yes.
What is, what are the other ones that you would prefer? Whoever you would be able to go, to leave unfilled that might be, you know, kind of similar amount of money?
So potentially the traffic engineer, which is a vacant position.
In this position, the finance is $79,000. What, what is the traffic engineer?
Traffic engineer, I don't know that I have that number, but probably comparable or more.
And so it says the wages are approximately 79. Do you know what the total, do you have it in front of you, Commissioner?
No, I'm looking at the chart.
Well, that is fully loaded.
That's what wages end up at?
Yes, that's misread. It is fully loaded.
What are you talking about here?
So you mean like it's fully loaded?
It is fully loaded.
For a full year or for the remainder of this year?
For a full year.
That's not fully loaded.
It's not?
Okay. No, it's got, it's got to be closer to 100.
That's the wage, that's the top of the salary range?
Yes.
For that position?
Yes.
So you're looking at 110 or...
Right.
From the low end?
But the transportation engineer is several ranges above that.
Oh, okay.
In that.
Yeah.
Because they're an engineer degree. I don't have it in front of me, but...
I...
She's going to take that one off the, off the list for now, that will help her take the, she's got three positions that are on that engineer that are vacant anyways. The chance of filling those two of them is even harder.
Yep. And we have in-house capability, so.
I would prefer that you get a finance manager.
As well.
Because that's critical, especially right now, I think, with all the COVID...
Gen, I prefer that as well.
Probably, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as long as we're going to hold on the other positions that are open.
So just note that's, we're going to hold on it, okay?
Yes. All right, so I hear six seasonal flaggers, labors. Okay to proceed with the finance manager, but the E3 off the table for filling. All right, thank you, commissioners. And next, it's Public Works Week this week, so we have a proclamation. Sorry it's not wild and exciting. I didn't do any dressing up on that, but we do have that. And then commissioners, we don't have this on here as far as tomorrow, the action item for the hearing for the Port of Clitz port. Was there anything necessary or was the information clear on that?
You guys, good, we understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not sure which one, which method we would take, but probably lack of a motion makes the most sense. And we don't even have anything to worry about.
Okay. All right. And then I also have a request to create, post and fill three positions and to eliminate three positions. And this is just kind of a very high level, and I'll go ahead with that. We're requesting to create, post and fill an E1 within the engineering construction work group. And we are requesting to create a county road assistant manager position and a personnel analyst position. We're proposing to eliminate a road ops ERNR manager, assistant road ops manager. Those duties would be to some degree recombined into the county road assistant manager position. And then create, or excuse me, then eliminate the admin assistant, the ERNR. And the personnel analyst position pulls up many of those duties that came out of the admin assistant position.
And this is a response to?
This is recognizing the change as a result of our pulling out the current expense vehicles out of ERNR. So it's taking a look at what duties are no longer needed or the percent or amount of tasks that aren't required as part of that work.
And that new position would be a 35?
We're not sure at this point. We need to take a close look at what the duties are and how that lines up with others. But that would be about in the ballpark, Commissioner. But that we would...
I'm okay with putting that on the agenda.
Okay. All right. And then, morning commissioners.
I have a compliment. They attended a meeting in Russellwood in regards to some of the issues they're having there. Our staff was essential. Our director showed up herself, she brought the manager of our utilities and a very impressive gentleman who actually handles their system. I was shocked at his knowledge, at the level he's at and the knowledge of some of the stuff that we go through and we have to deal with. I just wanted to say you guys did an incredible job and I could tell that the community was very, very satisfied with your guys' work.
Thank you. We've got follow-up and appreciate you attending as well. It's, it was just nice in general to meet face-to-face and not have a Zoom meeting. Well, kind of face-to-face. Kind of face-to-face.
Hers kept popping off.
I know. I need bigger ears.
She'd be talking.
Yeah, I need to wear that and also reset my glasses so they don't steam up. All these tricks. But it was, it was really, really nice to meet with the community and the association. We have work. We talked about rate setting, we talked about leaders, we talked about water quality issues. And I know that health department has been helpful in that regard also as far as being a resource. We'll continue to work with them as well.
We're lucky to have all of you. Really?
Yes.
Great team.
I didn't know what I said when I first got elected. Sorry. Not about you guys.
And Commissioner, we still need to follow up regarding the shoulder work.
Hmm, okay.
With the constituents.
Yeah.
But we absolutely see exactly, we've had conversations with our operations team.
Okay.
And are working on changes to that.
Perfect. And then the other follow-up item, you can check with Mike and Dave on Island Lake.
Yes.
Where they were with...
Yes.
Goss, and now some of those options.
Yeah. Island Lake and Victor. So what we're thinking in that regard, commissioners, is that we would be beefing up our own equipment and whether it be portable speed limit or something that's quick and easy to mount, but not necessarily permanent stations, but things that we can move from place to place and location to location. Because after a while, they lose their effectiveness if it's a, a permanent mounting. The large trailers don't necessarily work in all locations because we've got too narrow a right-of-way. So we're gathering members and what that inventory and what those flashing signs look like.
Yeah.
And we'll bring that back to commissioners.
I know some of the folks out at Island Lake were, you know, they were interested in, in speed tables, and I know that that is, been talked about in various forums. And I know that there's some concern about doing some improvements along those lines. So if you could, when you have Mike and Dave put together sort of a, you know, not just what they're recommending, but also why some of the other things might not be preferred or recommended there, you know, and their reasoning behind that. I think, you know, it's important. I mean, I know that they, that they understand why, but we need to be able to communicate to the community as well, like why...
Sure.
Why one, you know, way might not be preferable to another.
Okay.
Yeah, I love one of the ones that they always want to have that, like rumble things coming in, unless you live there.
Right.
If you live there, that sure makes your life horrible to hear that every day, you know, or... I had one more that I, I forgot. I got a phone call from the Port Allen. They were wondering where they are on that study for slowing the traffic down, out down at the boat ramp. Dave was looking into that and he never got that finalized and what was going to happen. I know we've had a lot going on, even if we were to look at slowing it down just during the summer months, but how to handle that and stretching that out. And then, of course, there's been different conversations over the years about the 35 mile per hour through the river road area, down the old Bucker Highway. There's still people that are calling and complaining about the speed and traffic, but they're right on the straightaway. You know, I, I try to explain that we set it according to what the people actually drive. It's not just what we'd like them to do because they don't follow the laws, because the law's there. They also go with the road, but if you just bring that up and, so I could have something to explain back to them, or if we're going to look at it, what that would look like.
Okay. And Commissioner, I'd like to follow up with you about the Port of Allen boat launch.
Okay.
How are we doing with the recycling and flow control? We heard back from anyone?
Not recent now. We have met, yeah, no, nothing recent.
I tried to call in today.
So commissioners, I know you want to do a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
So Public Works can put there, we are writing them in on the 26th, and we'll make that a 9:00 AM meeting.
Yes.
So any other business items, just bring forward on for Tuesday.
Great.
Please.
Okay. Seems like we're giving another follow-up item, but it'll come.
There's always something else.
There's always something else. All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Loretta.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on into community services.
We'll start with Kel.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we should go around the room. We have another person, so, your introductions.
Kevin Chu.
Alex Paisley.
Kel Rowan.
Jennifer Byerly.
Kate Wyndham.
Tager Callen.
Randy Muth.
And Sharon Trask.
Okay, two things. One is permit extensions. So last week or two weeks ago, we talked about being able to extend folks' permits due to COVID. So in the 2015 IDC under section 105.5, it does, it does allow us to extend for another 180 days for any reason, and we have always honored that. And so we just want to let folks know that that is available. We have that ability, and folks have been utilizing it already. Mariah Frazer is our point of contact, but anybody in the permit center building and planning could do that for someone. So they just, if they contact our extension 352 or send an email to permits@co.mason.wa.us. And if they have their building permit number and just want to let us know that they want an, an extension, we could go ahead and do that and get it notified in the smart app.
Is there, is there a way that we can do it that doesn't put the onus on the permit tee? You know, like, I mean, like, I don't know, I just, I don't want to put the burden on them. I mean, is there a way that we could just sort of do a blanket extension where if they have it, they know that it's going to be good for an additional period of time?
Do you mean like if the 180 days comes up?
Yeah.
And we don't cancel it? We can extend an automatic 180 days?
From the commission chairs, if we can do some type of action that...
Or relieve, re-release or something that lets people know. I mean, I, because I, it just, it feels, it feels like, I'm just not sure, like, how many people are just going to be, are going to know to just call in when they're permitted. It would be nice if we could just get out in front of it, so that you guys aren't filling...
We can automatically, like, once the, say, 180 days comes up and no one called in to extend it, we can automatic, rather than canceling it, we could extend it 180 days. We don't typically cancel it. We don't have the staff time to go through and cancel all of those expired permits. We did that during the closure with really old permits, like years old of expired permits that then we went through and, you know, what determined, do they really want it canceled out and all of that. So just, I don't know if that's helpful.
Can we give a 60-day extension blanket on anything that was applied for from this time to this time?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, for the commission, as an action, so that there is no confusion, there is no question. If they automatically, if they apply between this time and this time, because they were shut down because of this, they have an immediate 60-day extension or something.
Well, we could give the 180-day extension automatically. And, you know, anyone can call in and ask for that, but also, I guess, what, what I'm hearing is that even if people don't know to call in and ask, we can automatically extend it by not canceling it.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's where I'm headed.
Yeah.
And then can we announce that, have a news release or something go out a little bit?
Next Tuesday, we're having a meeting. It'd be a good time.
Okay, so you want to have, like, a news release to be read off?
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we could do that.
I think, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, that'll work.
And it might save you guys a little bit, too, you know. I don't know how many calls you're getting, but I'm certainly hearing from people that, oh, it's going to happen, I'm permitted, you know, and, and, a little invalid, you know, but if we give a release, it might save, you know, it might save a few phone calls to...
Okay.
...people's back.
Yep.
Can you call some of yours?
Yeah, sure. Okay, and then, so I'm hoping to have a planning commission meeting in June. We will do that by teleconference, so we publish, so people will have a Zoom call-in number or by the web. And, but we have four positions. We have three positions that are open and we do have three applications. So I was hoping that the board can do some interviews and hope to get some people appointed.
Do you have any issues with any, I mean, so we have three open positions and three applications, right?
Correct.
In your review, do you have any issues with the three just being appointed and serving? Is there anything in there that kind of...
I do not know. There's Isaiah Johnston. I don't know who that is, although he did attend one of our meetings and I think other folks know him. I'm familiar with Derek Holland and then Joseph Myers. I do not know that person, but I don't have, looking through these, I do, I personally do not have any issue with any one of these folks serving on the board, on the commission.
Since we've covered the territories of the area.
Yeah, so they would all, because we have a...
I did look some, looked them up.
So one would, one would be appointed for Commissioner District 2, Commissioner District 3, and then an outlarge, which would be an extra...
And that's Joseph Myers?
District 2, yeah.
Would you feel more comfortable having interviews, just so that we can, so that...
I think that would be up to you.
I see one up here that I'd like to be able to have an interview with. I don't want us to put people on there that thinks they're going to be an activist or make their decisions based on what they want the community to be like.
I would feel more comfortable just interviewing.
At least that's telling them what we expect, that the law and the rules are governed, not what you want your community to be like.
Right. And don't we typically interview?
Usually we do.
Yeah, I would rather not change that, even interviewing.
Can you, can you operate, if we didn't point, I mean, what, you don't have a forum issue?
We need four people for a forum. I haven't checked for the June meeting on who, who would be available.
And what's the date for your?
We have five Mondays in June, so the 15th, I think, it's the third Monday is the typical, but I could do the 22nd or the 29th as well. And I'm just trying to figure that out now on when I want to schedule it.
We could schedule an interview with a couple of them or what, for right after our meeting and end it out of the way, and then we have another meeting on the 6th, was it?
In June?
In June.
We were thinking the 2nd, so you...
The 2nd, okay, that gives us plenty of time.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe let's just plan to see what their availability is to interview after our, yeah, meeting next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
So do you want to just teleconference them in?
Yeah.
Or...
I, I kind of like the Zoom, just because I like to...
Do you want to see their face?
I like to see their faces.
Okay. So...
And I, I myself, I have, as long as we exist, I have no problem with us having just one in a little bit of time.
I was going to say, we can just ask them to come in and do the social distance.
Yep. Keep them right over there and we can start around and...
Okay. That might be easiest. I don't know what their Zoom capabilities on there is.
Well, and let, let them decide, too. They...
Yeah, give them an option. I like that better.
Okay. I'll reach out and see if... I'll reach out and see if they're available.
If we're set to do it, if we have to, that's for sure.
Right. It's a matter of they are.
Yep. So that. Not everybody's Zoom. Well, it also depends on which one you use. Some of them are, some of them suck.
Depends where they're at.
Depends on your internet.
Yeah, if they're internet. Mine's terrible.
Okay. That's all I have.
So all three, correct. Did you interview?
Do you want to invite that other person back into the interview circle that did not make the last time? I know she's so interested. I know she put the word up if she wanted to again, right?
Who's that?
I don't remember her name.
I don't either.
Or not. No one remembers the name. That's.
I, I don't remember the name either. I mean, I'm sure I have, I have it somewhere. It was a gal.
So we got, we got.
Okay.
Exalt these three, you're a great, perfect. Okay, Alex.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have a quick rundown on a grant that we'd like to apply to. I'm just looking for a quick blessing on. So of course, after we apply, if we do get a word in, then we can bring it back and brief them and jump in for contract and everything. But this one's kind of snuck up on us in the deadline this week, so I don't want to miss the opportunity. And it's pretty straightforward. So this is a solid waste education grant out of, from Department of Ecology. We applied to this same grant in 2018 and did some proactive education work in our solid waste program. And it included these flyers. Some samples for you guys. And then we also did some handout printing. So the flyers were around recycling. And reducing the contamination in recyclables. And then also letting people know what they can and can't recycle anywhere. So we would like to do this mailing again. We had a really good public response from it. And it's just a simple reprint and mail. And then the handouts, we actually printed those in Spanish as well, hoping to do some outreach to our Hispanic population. And so we have a box of these flyers in Spanish. And right now, they're simply, a lot of our education right now is reactive, you know. We're handing out to people that have already violated Mason County Code. And we're trying to integrate some education into our program that is a little more proactive and tries to catch people ahead of, you know, making mistakes or running into issues. So we're hoping to do a little bit of coordination with some of our Hispanic groups in that group. So it's a pretty simple grant. It's around eighteen thousand with a twenty-five percent match. We can cover this in our budget through our solid waste tipping fees. Not really a change to F D U. Most of the cost is in the printing. It's just a reprint, it's just a lot of staff time.
So you could read our, our head shake today or?
Yeah, just look for a head nod on the application.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. A couple of things, go through pretty quick. So hot off the presses. This came out over the weekend. This is a recommendation from Bob Lutz, who is the Health Officer from Spokane. These are return work baseline recommendations. And he's looking at it from the point of view of, rather than doing things by sector industry specific ways, can we write something up that's more general, could we apply it across sectors? So it reduces the amount of work that all us have to do. So he came up this, this weekend. This will be going out to WAC and to the rest of the county. I think this afternoon. Right. So we're, I'm mixed up in a little bit. This came out from Kathy Lopey, who is a state health officer. And it came out, speaking as well, I'm going to put that in here. So this is based in a large part on, is aligned with what we sent in the first time with our request for variance. So on the phone, on Friday afternoon, we had a phone conversation with Kathy Lopey, the governor, and John Weisman. And when she was talking about this, she says, this is a way to put guardrails on either side and not have to, it's not, you must meet everything to the exact, she says, you know, make sure we can give within the, you know, the guardrails. I thought that was a good approach. And we made, we can meet these things. She did tighten it up a little bit on some healthcare system readiness. So it was ninety percent. And she's low that eight percent open beds. We've got that. We only have one bed right now being occupied by anyone. So we're, we have plenty of capability. Testing, we're there. Typically, we're testing now between twenty-five and fifty tests per day with about one positive every other day. So we are well within that parameter as well. Case and contact investigations, we're on those within twelve hours generally done with the investigations. I mean, we're off of that. And then in response to the governor's question on Friday, we're one of the few districts that's following up with each positive case throughout their period when they are in isolation or quarantine to make sure how they're doing on a daily basis. And that's going to be a big part, I think, of the governor's plan moving forward, which I think that's what's coming out today on quarantine isolation policy on tracking, tracing, testing. Is that in order for this, I think he must mark the state go forward to have that individual contact with people when they test positive. And, and we are all over that. We've been doing that since, since the very first. So our nurses, people know everyone very well and stay right on top of that. And then protecting high-risk populations, we're working on that as well. Dr. Stein and Joy are working together to outline, you can take, so we had a federal, it was put out initially, I heard, as a guideline. And then became a recommendation, which was then picked up by the state as a guideline. Oh, that's cool. To test every patient and every staff member in skilled nursing facilities. So we're, we're setting up a schedule to do that and to not overwhelm our ability to test everyone else at the same time. So we're going to take all the test kits and basically set up a schedule by which we go through the skilled nursing facilities. And maybe we take twenty a day, whatever it is, in order to hit that timeline that we need to hit. So they're starting work on that, that procedure locally today. If we need to, we do have the ability to request strike teams from DOH to come over and give us a hand. But staff is sure we're smart and we have more than enough capability on our own to make that happen. So we're looking at those high-risk populations, making sure that those populations, they can't move anyway, stay very safe. So we put a cocoon around those folks and make sure that, you know, if we move forward, they're cocooned and safe. So I think we have a good plan. Today, we have a phone call with WAC at four, four-thirty. And I have one with Secretary of Health at five forty-five. It's going to go on until probably seven. So, and then I think the governor's talking at two-thirty. So there's a lot of stuff that's going to come up today. So I will probably be giving each of you a call tonight once I kind of sort through things and, and we can talk about what that's going to look like for Mason County.
Depending on your availability, your availability would maybe be beneficial to have a briefing tomorrow.
I could certainly do that.
Following our business meeting and then that way, because I know we have another letter to talk about today. Some of the decisions, the guidance today might influence that. I mean, maybe, maybe we just get back together then.
Okay, so I'll take Toby's notes this afternoon and be prepared to read for Saturday morning. Well, I should, that could be tomorrow, same thing. So I think we're making some big progress.
Well, this is definitely a more attainable set of goals than we've seen, than we've seen.
Explain that last one a little bit more though, what they're talking about. Because I don't, I hear what you're saying, and I read this again, wondering.
I want to make sure that we're hearing the same thing that they're saying. Remember, we had that conversation before.
Okay. So they're looking for us, if it's, for example, if we have a positive case that comes into a household that may have ten people, that's not considered an outbreak because it's considered within a household. If you have two or more from a facility or from a business that are not household linked, then that would be considered an epidemiological link and we would work on those. But it also says that we would not necessarily need alternatives to move up. And likewise, we would not need to move back if we have.
That's the one, the question I have, watching some of the other counties.
That is a big change.
Your new plan.
That's a, that's a really big change over the weekend.
But we, as a county, as we know, we can still handle some hurdles and stuff, just type something up if we see an issue.
Right. So yeah, if we see something and that's what we do, we watch for those and try to make those connections. Most of our cases really now are being linked outside the county. You know, people who work outside the county come in, kind of head over to somewhere else, they come back. And we've done a really good job about finding out, isolate them. They do their fourteen days or until symptoms have passed plus three days. And then they, and then they're off and doing their own thing. So we've had a really good response with people staying home and doing, and there was other things the governor wanted to know. He says, what is your rate of compliance on isolation? I said, you know what, really, other than we had one person who had a challenge with that. And we had to talk to them a few times on the phone. But even that person has now gotten a negative test, so they're off and doing their thing.
Well, I mean, I think generally, people that get sick want to prevent their family, neighbors from getting sick. So I mean, generally, can't speak an absolute. But I mean, I think more, more often than not, you know, if you test positive, you're going to want to do the brave thing to keep yourself and, because you care about safety.
Right. So we're really hoping we have some, some clarification because the governor put out statements last week that didn't come with a guidance package along with like other things had had. When we talked about the building stuff, that same day we had a building package to go out. We haven't had this one yet, so there's been a lot of.
Speculation.
Speculation, a lot of concern and some anger out in the community about what does this mean? Well, I hope to have that package today. So, and then we can brief it tomorrow and give it out on Facebook and Mason County pages and try to get some clarification around what does, what does quarantine mean going forward? What does expanded testing look like going forward?
Well, the big question that people have right now, I'm sure you've given you guys the same calls, is, you know, when you're connected to it, what by law do you have to do? I guess in Pierce County, they're going to their home and just because they were connected, saying, no, you're going to do it, and we're going to have the law enforcement there. And, you know, I'd like to be able to say what we're doing here.
Right. So that's, we'll get some clarification on that tonight because there's a lot of pushback on some of these things because some, there was some constitutional issues.
About how you can make them do it, but for your law enforcement does a lot.
One of my concerns has always been, you know, the role of health officer is very specifically spelled out in both state constitution and RCW and WAC. And if a health officer tells someone you're in voluntary quarantine, then within ten days, he has to bring that in front of a judge so the person gets due process. But if, if you make this a blanket thing, how is, how is due process guaranteed? And that's been the big question that a lot of us have had. How do you guarantee due, due process? So we're hoping to have some answers on that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's one of the things that I'm, I'm hearing about regularly now. There's a lot of things that are circulating online, you know, and there's, there's some, probably some misconceptions in there. But at the same time, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, how much of that is kind of handled locally versus, you know, a state enforcement arm? Because that's the other issue, you know, that, we don't do it. That's one thing. State DOH comes in, they do it, that's, you know, how do we handle that? You know, how do we handle those jurisdictional issues? How do we protect people's civil liberties? I know, I mean, it's, it's one of those rare times where, you know, there's, you find strange bedfellows, right? So there's, you know, people who are traditionally more conservative, kind of aligning with the ACLU, you know, on these things. And so that tells you that, you know, that should be an indicator that there is some broad concern about how these things are going to be applied.
So and to be really clear, we have had all along the ability to do involuntary quarantine. And we've used it in cases such as tuberculosis, where you have someone who refuses to stay in and take their medicines, you know. And we have, it's called direct observed therapy, where not only do they quarantine, but we have a nurse or someone watch them take their medicine. We've had that ability for a long time. We did the same thing with Ebola, right? If you remember back in twenty fourteen with the Ebola thing, we had some people who came back from Western Africa that we put into quarantine. Most of them, like, they were very glad to go into quarantine. We had a couple across the state, we had to send them letters, say, okay, you are going to quarantine. And it all, and that'll work out well. This is not something that's new.
And it's not even the quarantine. That's not, people actually understand that a little bit better than they do the, the testing. I could guess that Pierce County, this was just a over-aggressive tracer that made a decision that, that's hard threatening with law, law enforcement. I'll bet you that it didn't come to that from the cop. So if we have a policy or how we're doing it here, I'd just like to let the public know so they know this is what we're doing here. If you're hearing something different, it may be the individual or maybe something, that's a scam, you know, because those are happening too.
And our, our nurses and their, I don't know, if you could maybe explain how they, they go about their tracing? And how, well, everybody has, has stayed home, there's been no need for any ability to.
Well, I, I mean, I've been asking for that for a couple of weeks. I mean, there's not so much that we sit here and talk about it. I mean, you guys are doing regular video updates from the E O C.
We can go back into that. Yeah, we really should go in, we should do another one as soon as this guidance comes out. We should jump on that one video.
We do have one video out there already that talks about the tracing. But yeah, after tonight, I'm sure.
Tonight, I think there'll be some more information.
But if you want to do it really short, really simple.
Yeah.
Because these are the ones that y'all appreciate, people will follow it. They don't know.
Sixty seconds.
We try to keep them in. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, come to the point in, in history where we no longer get our news by reading the story. We get our news by reading the headline.
Right. That's true. So we'll try to keep it an understandable headline. So that's, today is, it's going to be just a big day with a lot of policy, I think, coming out and.
Let's hope there's some decisions. And then one of the big questions is going to be that, when these things do come about, at what point can we say it's a decision? Because remember, we had this conversation before, everybody was talking about this, but the law said this when, when he passed it. When is it, you know, going to effect? Is it by him signing something different? Can we change it from the podium? How is that?
Well, and that's, and that's actually, it's a good point because that actually kind of comes out tomorrow because the, the policy that they put out over a month ago was to shut down dental and those other things. And it says, unless extended, it expires today. So technically dental should be able to open tomorrow. And I know doctor's offices are opening tomorrow.
And I think that there are some dental clinics that are also opening tomorrow.
Right. So, so that's a case of he didn't extend it, so therefore it opens.
So please let us know, you know, input that.
And I think that's where, and we talked about this, that's where some confusion is becoming, are coming into this because if it expires and it opens, well, where is that in phase one, phase two, phase three? Because it's not specifically aligned anywhere.
I think that's the, that's the biggest frustration is the guidance, the guidelines that we, that we do receive contradicts what is said yesterday or the proclamation that was.
It's like having a drunk parent. A great example of that is in the initial stay-home order, they, it was pretty broad in government being essential. But then you look at the phases and government is in phase three. And so there seems to be some meandering between the phases that, you know, when there's uncertainty, then you have, you know, you have the issues that you do.
I think they're saying that's when the government can open the door. I mean, it's not, there's no.
I think that's where Spokane was going with this idea.
Yeah.
Is to say, so instead of coming up with, with very specific industry or sector or even sub, photography, for example.
Photography.
For example.
That one we're aware of.
Depends on the kind of lens you have.
Tell them. It is a broad guideline that can, that can be applied to anybody or any industry, you know. And then you would go ahead, especially this public health, it's a restaurant, then you still have your restaurant normal regulations that you apply as well. So, I mean, they would dovetail nicely on something that was a principle-based rather than a specific guideline. So, okay, I will plan on tomorrow after the meeting then.
Always changing.
Yes. I mean, and sometimes multiple times a day, so.
Yeah.
I'll schedule it for ten o'clock tomorrow.
Okay.
Because the meeting should be done by then.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Okay, and this, hopefully, may not be set in stone, but it's, it's very firm, it's not peanut butter, so.
I believe it will. It doesn't say draft anywhere. It doesn't say draft anywhere.
The draft was taken off, and the health, state health officer, Kathy Lofe, was very, I think, sincere Friday, when she said she's been working with the county to make sure that, she talked to a lot of people about this, and got some sign off, and that she would take it off of draft. So I'm, I'm willing to trust her with that.
Yes, yeah, I trust, yeah.
But again, what does the verbage say on, on the where is and, and the where is, is what gets signed? That's the thing that really makes the difference.
Hopefully, we'll find out today.
Yep. And we've got a big weekend coming up.
And a big weekend coming up. So that's the other thing, just really quickly, we worked on this last week, but we're working on, you know, just some messaging about stay smart, stay safe. You know, I'm concerned about, and I talked with the sheriff's office and the Forest Service, thank you for that, that really was very helpful, about what we do, and can we open up maybe some other things that would allow us to, and relief valve.
Yeah, I know.
So that is, that's kind of a fresh, we're heading this way.
All, all one hundred thousand, and we have to go there.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's not, I'll go to Party Rock and Cushman, let's go other places.
I'll be calling Walmart, 'cause some of these things I, I got from people this week, that, that one CEO lady that I got that connection with, I'll be trying to spread the concerns that these people are having.
My concern, my concern is hygiene, especially in Ridesport and Allen, me, you.
They, I wanna go check with, no, they went out, they, they bought the, the porta potties, they brought them in, they've got them at, at that location, so they haven't opened their bathroom, but they brought in porta potties any moment. They did the same thing down at the docks and the, and the boat launches in Bellefair, and they're going to help Steve and North Mason Resources overcome some of that shower issue. Currently, right now, we have all the homeless population that are in North Mason cannot get a shower.
Right.
'Cause the state park is closed. Well, Porta Allen is going to help out a little bit, and there's some that we.
That's cool. I know the state parks have their, their bathrooms are open, but their showers are not, so it's still, they're trying to tell people not to stay overnight. Plus these national parks, they have their, their toilets are open, but there's no maintenance, so they're not going into, and cleaning them every hour, 'cause that's just, they still have the manpower to do that.
Yeah, so Dave has been working with Eva Lau from the Forest Service, so.
Yeah, she's awesome. We had, we had her on our, she was at our EOC meeting on Wednesday.
And we also have the state parks guys and, and rangers who are around.
Yeah, you guys were some mainstreams, amazing. Perfectly nice, and we're moving that again Wednesday, just so that we can all be on the same page.
So we did a lot of coordination last week, and, and, you know, it was just a very open discussion, "All right, guys, what are we gonna do?" And she took the lead on, on a lot of that, saying, "Do we need to shut things down? Do we need, we need open things more and provide more space?"
And the locks have been cut, don't have a lock button on it.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, you know, their perspective is really helpful, because, I mean, if you look at the, the forest and the national park, how many counties is in scan?
Right.
You know, so they're working with, you know, we might learn something that Clum or Gray's or Jefferson is doing that might work here.
Poor Hood Support Building.
Oh, they just get inundated.
Yeah, they just hammered it. That ice cream shop, I appreciate their open, but it's gotta be something, I shouldn't say it's gotta be, I sure wish we had something we could do to go in there and just tell them that they have to help solve police themselves.
I talked to Doctor Stein about that specifically, 'cause there, there was the issue with the ice cream shop, where it was just, I saw pictures, there was just dozens of people, and, and, you know, at least, just kind of, you know, no masking, no social distancing, no effort to do anything other than what they normally would do. But on the flip side, you had the IGA, where they started to kind of meter people in, you know, and so you have kind of a tale of two businesses there taking totally different approaches. So if you, if you chat with Dan today, I'm sure you will, you know, circle back with him, because I thought it would be an opportunity for, for him, or even our restaurant inspectors, to maybe just pop in and talk to, talk to the businesses about, you know, just, put some tags down on the floor, on, on the ground, you know, tape or something, say, you know, "Stay here, stay here," provide them with, you know, some of our literature.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not supportive of, of putting extra things on people, but this is, there are certain expenses where that may be, and we have the authority to create regulation. I, I think they need to be aware of that, and they need to handle it themselves, or we need to have it.
I'll, I'll talk to Alex about maybe putting an informational push through Allen Union and Hood Support.
Yeah, and it's not about that, I mean, I think it's, it's, wouldn't necessarily be asking them to do anything that everybody's already having to do anyway, you know, I mean, it's, you know, they don't wanna, it's not a new regulation, it's what people are being.
Even if they just went out there and said, "Hey, we have the right to refuse service, you will either get some social distancing, or we won't serve you." That alone would make a huge difference, because I have the same picture of stuff. There is nothing, there's no control, and they're up on the decks, pulled together and combined, there was.
We'll, we'll do an informational push, I'll do that.
I think the burger place got hit pretty hard, too, down on the corner.
I'll go through.
Yeah, sure.
She's in line.
No, 'cause you didn't wear masks.
Okay, well, that's where we're headed, lots of stuff.
I bet, there's lots of changes this week.
Yeah.
So did, I have to ask, is this live streaming?
Facebook.
To Facebook?
My YouTube thing.
Okay. Okay, 'cause I did, I was conversing with Frankie, he said it's not on the side.
Yeah.
And I saw the Facebook thing, and I tried that side, wanted to make sure it was somewhere.
All right. Sure. Yeah, so, I did my pre-surgery, surgery, but what, tomorrow.
Nice.
So, yeah.
So I'll call him Frank.
Let's get everything for doctors.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder how much we're, we're, they're using every day.
Oh, Dr., Dr. Vichy from Mason General, they are losing a lot of money.
They're paying so much.
Yeah. Natalie Bean hit hard on them.
Good morning, Frank speaking.
Hello, Frank, hey, so we're on, and I found out that we're live streaming on Facebook because YouTube didn't work currently.
Oh, that sounds like fun.
Yes, electronics. Okay, so you can hear okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Okay. Let's move into our support services briefing, we'll go around the room for introduction.
Jennifer Chute?
Jennifer Byer.
Debra Towne.
Ray, do another one?
Sharon Trask, and Frank, enter.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item we have is the MOU with North Mason Little League for the equipment storage, and Ross, I believe, you've covered that.
He's not here.
He's not here.
There's no Ross to cover it.
There is no Ross to cover it. So there is a draft of a contract that was completed and put forward. I believe he was going to submit that for today's review, and then we were going to have that brought forward to the North Mason Little League.
Okay, we do have that in our packet.
Oh, okay.
We just don't have Ross.
Yeah, we just, yeah, just no Ross.
So the question is, is there modifications or changes to that contract that you'd like, or should we continue to go forward with it and bring it on for the action agenda?
Did Tim review this? Or, did he go?
Uh, Tim, Tim did, yes.
And are we willing to allow this for, for other entities?
We can, if asked. There is additional space there. We've also put in some insurance requirements, so it was reviewed by risk as well.
Looks good, Frank.
Looks good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next item is the timing of the revenue, the financial statements, or during the review of the financial statements, we had some questions around, what's the lag time on some of these revenue items? And Jennifer did some research, and she has some answers for you.
Yes, so, the first thing, on the lodging tax, and this information is from Lisa Grazer, the lodging tax is received on a two-month leg, just like the sales tax. The brief funds are received right after the sale, and so it doesn't go to the state first, you know, later, it's directly after the sale, receives in the county. The community services homelessness prevention, the recording filings, that is done directly. And, and the reason that we probably didn't have a shortfall is, a lot of the revenue is received online, a lot of the recordings are done through online services, so, so that would be the reason for that. And then I got some information from Jill Tolle also on the recordings, and she said, again, most, most things are, or not most, but a lot of things are done electronically, and there's a lot of refinances going on, and so not just the sales of houses, and that makes sense, 'cause the rates are so low. And then on the, the state documents, some of them are, are exempt from the, from the homelessness recordings, and that would include things like the liens, marriage licenses, and death certificates, so, you know, some of those things, like the, the marriage licenses are probably done more face-to-face, so that would make sense if they're not, you know, getting recorded in, into homelessness prevention records, so. And then I received a nice spreadsheet from Cheryl Hilt and the, and the sheriff's office finance on the reason that their revenues are, are lower, and that's mainly to do with the office closure of the period, so the court's office is researching why, why their revenue is lower. So I think that covers everything.
I think we answered that one the right away, too, so.
Yeah.
Come for a follow-up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Max?
One more item, just to give the commissioners notice, the Engineers Guild accepted our offer and have ratified our CBA. We will be bringing it forward for next Tuesdays or for the next meeting with signatures from the union side.
Okay. That's next Tuesday, just so you know.
Yep.
Awesome.
Good job.
Yeah, they, they accepted the offer we, we talked about.
Good.
Very good. Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome. And I believe that's all we have for our briefing today.
Okay, and questions for right here?
Then you have the commissioner discussion.
Right. So we do have this letter to the governor, that, I believe it's nineteen counties signed, but we may wanna hold off to see what happens in the next couple of days.
Yeah, yeah, let's just, I don't wanna poke anybody in the eyes, we're getting.
No, no.
That close.
Yeah, hopefully, there'll be some big changes. If not, we can.
Resurrect it, bring it back next week.
That's right.
Yeah, matter of fact, if it doesn't go through, I'm in favor of bringing it onto the agenda for that next week.
Yeah, well, let's see what, I mean, we'll, and we, we, at least tomorrow, when after Dave comes back to it.
Right, and if we do follow this, there are some things that I would like to, to add to it, because there's a, a lot of emotional things, effects like suicide, domestic violence, mental, mental health, those are all, the calls for those are increasing, and suicides are going up, so.
Well, I was just cautioning that, I mean, we had our coroner last week run through all of our suicides here, but, I mean, not to say that that isn't happening in other counties, but at least here locally.
Well, and the other question would be, if all the other counties are agreeing to it in that form?
Yeah.
Can we redo it in a different form and then send it back around? I don't know.
Put it to our own.
Oh, yeah.
To our own. So that was, that was submitted to the governor.
Right.
Last week.
Tuesday afternoon, I think I went in.
Okay.
Yeah.